Good morning, it's exactly the same old one. A quick announcement about our rehearsal goal. Before we start, I need to make two quick announcements. The first one is concerning the restrooms. The restroom for female restroom is behind stairs from this Cody home you come out to the left. The male one is upstairs and the APA one is where you come in to the right. When you go down the hallway to the right, there will be one there. Eventually, this for the council, I don't know if you all know, but Council Mayor Parity is quite ill and she will now be joining us. So for everybody to know, know that. So let's go ahead and get started. I first want to thank Council President Sandoval, also my board council pro friend, Omero Campbell, and Luke, and everybody at their respective city council offices for putting all this work together. It has not been missing. This is here on our own road. And the leadership shown by President Council President Sandoval has been outstanding. He's definitely doing extremely important, so thank you. So let's go ahead and get started. I know that you all received the agenda. It is like similar like last year. I'm going to be with my wonderful iPhone with an alarm. We're going to be time table so we can make sure that we cover everything.
Was that personalized email that pretended itself? I didn't do 5:15 PM last night.
You got it. So let's go ahead and get started. So I came up here as we know, last time we talked about the X D and inclusion. There's been this way of any inclusion that came from being several years before with the actual events and everything. This is what I came up and I know it has been worked with. I know that there's more work to be done, but I just wanted to make sure that we are all very aware and this is present as we do the work today. Then from there, there's a couple things concerning questions. We have updated this and this is just a recommendation as council members work through all these goals. It's basically looking at is this in alignment with the underlying five priorities and commitment to advocate inclusion. That is question number one that we have service for everyone to be considering. Considering this is a reduction year, is this an urgent need? This is very important because we all know that unfortunately it's a reduction year. So obviously you want to provide the best for the city and county of Denver, but we can't do everything. We'll be discussing a little bit more of that. Is this an essential need for day-to-day operations? Are we, and here we're going to have to start looking at day-to-day operations and not just be the visionaries that all of you are, but we need to go into more day-to-day. And is it new or existing policy? Is there anything else that you think that needs to be considered, council members, as you are doing the prioritization of these goals that we will be discussing today? So with that, here is your focus.
And maybe it's under one of these banners already, but specifically, does your resources from this come from a dedicated source or general profit? Is the source of funding that might happen to other people? Or whether it's a competition with other general profit?
Just really quick, I also was talking about our budget, our priorities. I want to reference, I've been hearing rumors around the city that there's going to be layoffs, there's going to be curflings. And so I haven't gotten an answer or I haven't gotten any information about how many FTEs, how many we have in the city and what that reduction is looking like. We haven't been conferred with about it. And so like, how do we allow the administration to cut people when we don't know what the effects are going to be in our communities? And so just wanted to put that out there. Because this is kind of going around the city now. They, and folks can see the deficit that we're in. So I don't know if the mayor, someone's going to tell you that.
Hi, Andrew, see us, mayor's office. Just wanted to let you know that we are working out a timeline, but you all will hear the last definitely next week. Hopefully I'll get out when and where and how today. They're finalizing everything and we'll be keeping what's happening sometime next week. And I just don't have the final. They were still playing around dates, but it'll happen next week.
One question we had at the budget committee meeting, we presented the reduction. If I asked how many employees are, I'm not sure, but they could offer extra, or not others, but how many employees do we have? And how many employees did we grow under the former administration? And what is going to be ahead now? So that would be really important, had the past that any committee committee to go and have. So if we could make sure that that's added, making that be something that will be in 2020, they know how many employees we currently have. And it's how many employees are under the head cover. And we wish that could that help or seem what, where we need to go.
Okay. And ARPA specifically, I think, how many positions grew under ARPA? How many positions were under ARPA? Really, because those were crucial services that those monies could only be used for. And I'll just talk about District 11. We still have food insecurity that is massive. Still have people signing up 40, 50 cars each on a weekly basis to get food. And so again, it's hard to support decisions where it just denies, you know, how many positions were increased through ARPA and what the current status is.
Thank you. So with that, this, this all began well way before March 1st, when we had the first gathering. But we gathered for the budget goals to identify them on January 1st. They, a lot of grouping of similar policies took effect. And then here we are, then we had a budget and policy committee this past Monday. There, there was a presentation of budget and policy proposals by the different council members that had included that. And then today, here we are, I had the retreat. And what's important in this retreat is you can discuss back and forth some of it, but the key one is going to be the scoring. And I know we've done the scoring like this for the past three years. With the scoring, with the scoring, that's what's going to guide us in terms of the prioritization of what needs to be focused on and what is it that's going to be included in the mayor's letter, a delivery to the mayor. I will go ahead and get into the punchline immediately. Basically have a mayor's letter that includes almost everything. And I know that we saw a good portion of it that happened last year. Really, it's not where you are this year. That it's just going to have to be a little bit more prioritization happen, et cetera. And then basically the final discussion of priority policies will happen in the seat like this afternoon. And with the agenda, we are very determined to finish by 4:30, adjourned at 4:30, by 4:15. We will have concluded everything because we want to share it to Council President Sandoval to close us out. So hence the reason why I will be taking, you know, time in terms of allowing you to score, but at the same time have some discussion and then stop the discussion when we're running out of time. So with that, expectations and run a show is sort of, I already said this in a way, is basically is one step in the budget process. Remember that members can advocate your policies in the fall when you get back together at the budget hearings, through the budget proposal process and during the budget amendment process. So I want to make sure that everybody, reiterates this important. Then members can put forth an argument and say your specific proposals. Discussion will focus on retain and new policies submitted through the survey. And the letter will define what matters most to council. So once again, you will start hearing again the word prioritization. What matters most was that what are the priorities? In order to make sure that the city and county government continues to agree effectively. And with that, the score sheet again, we will continue the 20 points for each goal. Luke will be live, taking in all of your points and then being able to present them. What is it? And then the priorities will be allocated and whole numbers. So I remember last year, there were like some 2.5, 1.7, you know, 2.3. And I was like, what is this? So it has to be up to 20 points. The 20 points have to be like 1, 5, 10, 15, 12, 9. So just, just to make sure that, that, that's a debate there that is happening. Any questions concerning the score sheet or anything? And you will be doing it live, you will be able to see it. I know that you're all prepared and ready, so. With that, here are the budgets out of eight goals. The first one that we're going to discuss is the community safety goal. This is one that is invest in programs and methods to continue the city's approach of reducing crime, prioritize prevention, engage directly with mayor votes, et cetera. I mean, that is the first goal we're going to discuss. The second goal is empower communities, which is to all focus on improved customer service by listening to and learning from residents. You have that ensure open access to information, protect civil and human rights in communities, avoid the whole of discrimination and oppression. And then the third one, third goal is address Denver's housing needs and is ensure that people of Denver are housed, improve accessibility, diversity and stability of housing, something that I know with Denver, this is something to be worked on. And also then number four, support workers and businesses by improve, you know, economic mobility and opportunity, empower workers and incubate businesses statewide, focus on the small and local business sectors, support a strong network of community organizations. So those are four out of the eight. And then the fifth one is prioritize client response. Treat client change as an emergency, protect our communities and natural environment through collaborative action and investment, address that historical environment, injustice, while aiming to prevent physical burdens and harm. Number six, discontinue Denver's infrastructure that create complete neighborhoods through state's multi-modal transportation connection, the reducing the traffic deaths. I know that's a big conversation. And number 25% by end of 2026, that focus on high injury network, invest in flood and stormwater litigation, et cetera. And then number seven is strengthen family, youth and older adults, invest in developing Denver's most vulnerable residents, now support the education. And then number eight is build healthy communities by increase access to physical, mental and addiction healthcare, and first invest in social independence of health, achieve the single list, continuing health services, et cetera. So these, I just wanted to make sure that we reviewed all the eight goals that all of it finalized back in March 16th. Any questions or comments till now? So whatever is due now is I actually want to hand it over to Council President Sandoval in order to talk about expectations and priorities during the meeting today.
So, good morning, everyone. And thank you for coming up and venturing out of the city to look at Denver. I think we might have a councilway when we had, I think council in Denver, we were here, has been unplanned when we had it the last time up here. And when we were thinking about where to have these things, I really wanted us to have inspiration. I feel like a lot of us are daily driving and getting so focused on things that sometimes how do we find inspiration? And in that same vein, I know you all have heard me talk a lot about me being in my master's program to help me become a better person. And with that, when I was, I read this book, Renee Brown. And in that book, there's a book that I have been using since, since reading it, that clear is time. And I've really been attempting as you're, you're to be as clear as possible. Because I see what you knew six members. I always refer back to Protab and I'm like, do you remember this from last year? And she's like, I don't. And she's like, I need to be a little bit more clear about that. And I think I picked for granted because that's for granted because I have a councilway for seven and a half years. And so I monitored this, this is my life. And so I really attempted to think about this, use the newer class. You're not going to anymore, you're newer, so freshman class, whatever you want to call it. Maybe sophomores now. And how to be really clear with expectations and what you need. So with that, I was meeting with Elizabeth and we were talking the other day, I was on the L.A. panel. And I got asked about hard budget times. And I'm just going to be honest with you. I feel like my whole entire time in council since being elected has been a hard budget time. Then my class came in and six months later we had COVID. And so I haven't to be known anything different. I feel like everything, I remember looking for council member Montero. We have a little bit more in weight of the budget. I remember looking for council member Esmetra. It wasn't as focused and such hard times. And then I get elected and we're sitting along and we think that things, we're going to have all this great 2020 budget and COVID hit. And so with that, when I was meeting with Elizabeth and Protab, how do we define what are our priorities in this huge budget year? And so I just came up with some guiding principles for myself that I thought I would share with all of you. That in this, this time, we really have to define what matters most together. And I'm just going to say that again, together, all of us are in this together. And that our job at this retreat isn't just a retreat. I didn't like that word. I think this is a really hard moving session. I'm not at a retreat, I'm not at a swap, I do that word. But we really need to make our choices, set shared priorities and give our agencies and the mayor, administration, what our direction on city council is. And I don't think that that's going to be an easy job with, with us. And in this moment, what I feel like I have to do and what I'm sharing with all of you is that I have to lead with discipline, I have to lead with my values, and I have to lead with a long-term in mind. And I hope that we can be all honest with each other, lovingly respectful. I hate that there will be trade-offs. And I think that we need to be rooted in the needs of our constituents and come out of this with really under each priority, three to five focused priorities under each goal that we can all stand by together. So that's just what I have been really thinking about like over the past month, on how to find this retreat, how to do this in a time where it's a budget reduction, which I feel like every year it feels like it's a budget reduction. At least that's my experience, I don't have to speak for myself. And how do we do that coming together? And I know I say this often, but what I do when I'm in contentious meetings in my conference discussions, I always look for the lowest common denominator, right? What's the lowest common denominator? And I think that denominator in this room is that we all love Denver. You would not have run for office if you did not love Denver. You would not have run for office and put up with all of the things that you choose to put up with if you did not totally 100% share for Denver. So in this time, and love the people. I got asked the other day, I was on the panel, what's the best thing that I love about Denver? And I literally said, the people. I wouldn't have run for people, that matter most to me. So we can just keep that as our guiding value in this room, all of us, including our guests in the back, including our staff in the back, including all of the people who have put this together. You would not be a public servant if you did not love Denver. There has to be something in me that really is about serving. So we'll just keep that in mind and thank you all. And if you all disagree with that, that's fine. It's just something that I have been really giving a lot of thought about and how to present that to you all in your year that we keep turning, feels like a little bit big shape every time I open up the news, every time I read the paper, every time I talk to someone. And let's do that, we can hope for a continuation. Thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. So three key things, most of you know that I'm a trained chemical engineer. So engineers look at everything in variables. Here's our lawyer smiling. This is how engineers are, we look at stuff in variables. And I think our Council President Sandoval did a great talk about this year of reduction and priorities. And I looked at everything she said in variables. And these, for me, these are the three most important variables that she actually shared with all of you. First one is define what matters most together. That is basically together, not for what matters most for council pro term, I don't know. Not what matters first for council members, so it's what matters most for everybody together. Three to five priorities for goal. Now there's me a dear, I always go by numbers, I'm like, the top three. Maybe we have to add a fourth one because it's also as important. But if there's like nine of them, not all nine are priorities. We, we all have to come to that realization. And the last one, the lowest common denominator, wow, we're really doing algebra here. Congratulations, Sandoval. But the lowest common denominator is true, I know, I know all of you, and you all love Denver. I mean, you wouldn't be doing this if you did not love Denver. So those are the three things that we want to keep in mind here. So with that, I want to do a little exercise with all of you to think about this. Now that you know those are the three variables, we are going to be facilitating you towards when the conversation gets tough, I'll ask, hey, what about this variable? I mean, I'm going to use this as a way to continue the conversation. What is it? How do you define for yourself, what is a priority? Looking at those three variables, when you're in the midst of it and you have to score the 20 points, and you're going to go ahead and score what's very important, how do you define for yourself, what is a priority? I'll give you a minute to think that. And then I would like to go around the room and get some insights. What is it? So everybody knows, oh, this is how our council member, I'm on B, this things, what a priority is. Do I have a common denominator with them on that day? So give yourself a minute and then we'll go run for office. And we'll do it quickly because at 9:30 we're starting to go. Okay, since this was a discussion, we had Council President Sandoval and also Council Pro Term, Omero Campbell. And it was mainly per idea, Omero Campbell, you're the first one that's going to define, probably define a priority for yourself personally, if you will.
Thank you. In this process, I am going back to the goals that we came up with together and thinking very specifically about how do we narrow it down in the context of what we're working on. So if we know that there are budget reductions, how are we very judicious about the points that we're going to put in, in a common score? For reference, which is that ones?
Do you want to say anything else?
Yeah, so my, my, how I'm going to define a priority today is I'm going to derive the signpost amount of impact. I want to know how I get the turn on the debt and I'm going to have an impact. To know it is a reduction year, you still need to have impact goal, probably even an impact goal sometimes for the budget.
Thank you.
So basically to the communities that deserve, so that's the ones that are anything else, how do we make sure that people have food on their tables, that they have a decent living, necessary, so accessing healthcare. And I'm especially in there for the under reductions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council President, one comment about how we've always been in reductions. I think it's even more important for us, as we were campaigning, we were all thinking about expansions. And all the questions that we got as candidates were about expansion. So I think that's also an important note to make as well. So as far as varies, two things. Does it directly advance the interests of the people of Denver? And then second, because I'm prioritizing, does it indirectly advance the interests of the people of Denver?
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. I think when I think about what is, what are our priorities? And what I think about is who's the most vulnerable people in our district? And how is this going to affect them? As well as certain phrase that I've been thinking about is like, is this a need to have or a need to have? Yeah, in a long, yeah. So yeah, I think kind of along the same lines of some of how this is trying to ensure that we're thinking about how to cause the least amount of harm to people and have the greatest impact for the most vulnerable people in our city. So it's along the same lines of like, we know that their people have basic needs. How do we make sure that those basic needs are met, given there's tougher. And knowing those that are most vulnerable, I would prioritize of what those needs are.
I, the way that I'm looking at this is, I don't believe in any of our budget retreats as far as city council. Have we also included in the love that we have for our city employees who are also Denver residents, do this work? And the more that we talk about it, the more separated it feels like our acknowledgement of that is. Because those same people who are the most vulnerable in our communities are some of our lowest paid city employees as well. And so when we see what's happening at the federal level with Doge, different part service jobs just slash and burn, are we going to do that in our city out of fear? Or are we going to really serve those who are most vulnerable and take into consideration those city employees that are also Denver residents that we love and care about as well?
I would add a good point.
By our residents plus employees.
Thanks, I think that's right. I think our priorities have to be the things that we've heard from our residents that they need the most.
No, me.
And I agree with that, too, and I'll make it water, because me. And I've lived in my community for all 45 years. And I know the community, and so I prioritize based on our goals and what are the policies that get us there? And what are the things that actually harm getting to the goal versus facilitate getting to the goal? Sometimes we've adopted policies that in my view have prevented us from getting to the goal because they've done some harm. And how do we do that harm reduction as we adopt these policies?
I've heard some things that I went to, I think were my priority definition is that when was, and like, does it need to have or is it a must have? Vulnerable communities, the other that I think I would just add is, is what we're coming at the root of additional major kind of social economic consequences? Or are we trying to patch at the other end? And like, what's the better use of city dollars and city time? And so then government is not the best person to do everything. And I think we need to decide if we are the one to do it or our partners or the other ones to do it.
For me is looking at a very tight budget year. It's going to be, I'll evaluate things on public safety. And you know, we need to keep our people safe. But Elizabeth, when you were describing that budget priority, you did stop before the part of, let's say, public safety emphasizing our public health links. So I'll be looking at that and then what we need to do to keep our economy safe. Our people need to be able to work, whether it's employees or other residents. It's got to be big funds.
And Elizabeth, I'll say I'll give up that folks out there. And
And my focus is to make sure that our priorities are measurable and it means the, the, really the, what we're focused right now on a, a